Welcome to Lewisville Senior Recreation Center for this meeting this evening. I appreciate members of the public coming, our friends from across the diverging diamond to my right, and my councilmember and staff, and of course, the consultants ABC X2 who are the real purpose for our evening, our being here this evening. I want to just give both trustees and councilmembers a chance to introduce themselves real quick. I'll start. I'm Bob Muckel. I'm the mayor of Lewisville. I have been for eight years and I will be for another six weeks or so. And then someone else will take this position. So when do we, Clint, you want to go next, or let's just go down here and then we'll start back here.
I'm Ashley Stolzmann, Lewisville City Councilmember, Ward 3.
I'm Dennis Maloney, City Councilman, Ward 3.
Chris Lay, Lewisville Councilmember, Ward 2. Excuse me, Ward 1. Oh, no. They're the unhappy ward. Ward 1.
Not even sure what to say, Chris. I'm Jay Keeney, Lewisville City Council, Ward 1, for another six weeks.
Susan Lu, City Council, Ward 2. And we're always happy if somebody wants to pinch-hit and help us out in Ward 2. Although, we don't need much help because we are the happy ward, so.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Clint Folsom, Mayor, Town of Superior. I'm Mark Lasis, Mayor of Tempe.
Hi, I'm Kevin Ryan, one of the trustees.
Ken Lish, one of the trustees.
Hi, Laura Skowczynski, also a trustee.
Sandy Hammerly, also a trustee.
Neil Shah, also a trustee.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here this evening. On behalf of the Town of Superior, I want to thank Mayor Muckel, the Lewisville Council members, and staff for working with us on this issue and for being hosts this evening. As you're aware, the Town of Superior and City of Lewisville have been working together on this issue since early 2018. We've retained a consultant, ABC X2, to help us better understand the airport noise issues and identify potential opportunities to help reduce the impacts to our communities. This process has included a baseline assessment and strategy development. The purpose of our meeting tonight is for the Lewisville City Council and Superior Board of Trustees, along with the community, to hear the final analysis and recommendations from our consultants. Tonight's meeting is a joint study session, and we will not be voting or taking any formal board or council actions at this meeting. Any formal actions would occur at a publicly noticed board or council meeting in the months ahead. So with that, I'll go back to Bob.
So as part of this process, we've conducted an extensive public process, having town hall open meetings. We've used a survey process with Engage Lewisville and Lewisville and Shape Superior. In Superior, we've received hundreds of emails, and the consultant has worked with us to consolidate, you know, all this public input. I think it's pretty clear that we understand there's a problem, right? So that's why we're here. That's why we, you know, I think we understand that public, the concerns of the public, and that's why we're here, why we've hired the consultant. It's not our intent for this to be a public hearing. We may not be taking public comments tonight. The goal here is to hear the report, the final report, from the consultant, to have the trustees and councilmembers have a chance to ask the consultant questions, to make sure we clearly understand what they're telling us. And if there's time, we have the room till 9:00, so if there's time at the end for public to ask questions that haven't been covered by the councilmembers or the trustees, we'll consider doing that if we have time. So, take it away, Clint.
Okay. So at this time, we are going to be introducing our consultants, James Allerdice and Jason Schwartz from ABC X2, who will present the final report from their work. The councilmembers and board members, we're going to shift to these chairs over here so we can actually see the screens. And if board members or councilmembers have questions, as Bob said during the presentation, they can ask them of the consultants. But after they go through their presentation, we're going to transition back so we can face you, and then we will do additional questions and answers from the boards to the consultants. And again, if time allows, we will open it up for public to ask questions of the consultants or the board. So thanks again for being here, and we'll transition now.
I don't know if I said it that clearly, so I think we should, I mean, to the councilmembers and trustees, I mean, I think if people have questions that are very directly, like, related to a topic that's brought up, I think we should go ahead and ask them of the time. But of course, there'll be time to do this at the end also, so.
Good evening, Mr.'s mayor, I think is the proper way to say that, trustees and councilmembers. It's our pleasure to be here tonight to go through this presentation and tell you what we've come up with for recommendations and strategies. As the mayors had said, we started this out more than a year ago with a baseline study, and the intent was to basically identify the problems, learn some of the things that you already knew, so that we could better understand the issues and try to come up with some strategies going forward that will help to improve the quality of life in your respective communities. There's a couple of milestones that happened along the way, unexpected but very welcome. One was, the airport developed a noise task force out of some of the initial contact that we had with them. It was unexpected that it happened that quick, but it was very welcome. That kind of, you know, crossed over into Phase 3 of what we would have been doing, which is the implementation phase, but it was just really too good of an opportunity to pass up. So we went ahead and engaged in some of those activities, and we're going to brief you on some of those things that are ongoing this evening, as well as cover a little bit about the briefing that we received from the FAA today. And the other thing I wanted to touch on briefly was the surveys that have been taken. The initial survey, we did and had enough time to respond to. The second one, we have not yet. But if you go on to the website, and I don't know exactly what the address is, but we'll get it for you, the survey and the responses are there. We felt very strongly that you all took the time to fill out the survey and give us your comments. You deserved a response to each and every one of those. So we did that. So if you go on there, you'll see that they've been de-identified. They're just identified by a number, and then you can correspond the number to the response. So hopefully, you'll find that enlightening. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jason, and he'll get down to the nitty-gritty.
Thank you. I'm not used to holding a mic while I speak, so it'd be a learning experience for all of us. So, real quick, just in terms of an agenda, so you all know what to expect and what's coming. We plan on very briefly covering the project objectives, again, just to kind of level-set. So for folks that haven't been tracking this from the start, you're kind of familiar with why we started the project and what we intended, or what was asked of us. Then we'll talk about the process we took on. I'm going to talk about the stakeholders, and that's in the context of these decision-makers. We got a lot of questions from the community about, what's this group's role? What is the airport's role? What is the FAA's role? Why is it the FAA doing this or that for the airport? So when I get into the stakeholder slide, just kind of the context for that is to kind of give you an overview of who does what at a very high level, but so you'll have a little bit better of an understanding of who's responsible for what within the operations and the noise area. And then we'll get into our recommendations, which is probably why most of you are here, very briefly talk about current status and next steps, and then have some questions and answers. So at a very high level, the objectives for this project were kind of boiled down to three. The first thing we heard was, from the, actually, when we started with Superior, was we're getting a lot of aircraft noise. We're getting a lot of community concerns, complaints, calls, et cetera. And so that was sort of the initial thing. Find ways that we can reduce the noise for our community. Secondarily, there was some support needed to engage better with the airport. How can we, the town, and then later, the City of Lewisville, work more collaboratively with the airport, with FAA, with those stakeholders? So we took that on as well. And also, work better and more effectively with the community. I guess there was a lot of calls, emails, things coming in. Staff weren't necessarily trained in noise and airport operations, so to help with effectively engaging the community and responding to those community concerns. So those were kind of the three tiers of what we were trying to do. And as you'll see, as we move along into recommendations, we addressed all three of those areas. Now, in terms of processes, Jim mentioned, we started with a baseline assessment, and in that, we looked at things like the airport operations, meaning how many arrivals and departures are annually. How has that changed? Most of you, or all of you probably know, there's been a lot of growth at the airport, so we saw that. We looked at the airspace, so how are the procedures in and out of the airport? When they fly over community residents, you know, what are those communities? What types of aircraft are they? Is it flight training operations, as a lot of you have told us it is? What about jet arrivals and departures, things like that? We looked at the noise program at the airport, kind of where that is, and how that's, how developed that was, and also, local land use and zoning around the airport, and then it's also on the airport. Phase 2 was taking all that information and identifying strategies, is what we're calling strategies, to address those concerns that came up in the community input we received and through the baseline assessment. What we'll be presenting on today, the majority of the recommendations will be in that Phase 2 identification section, where we're talking about flight procedures. We say notional, meaning they're sort of conceptual right now. They're not. So if you see a line on a map, and your house is under the line, please don't panic. These were just, it's just to give a concept that we're thinking about. We had a meeting today with many of the elected officials here, with the FAA, who told us that a roundtable would be required to ensure that the wide community interests are represented before we go to the FAA with, hey, here's a procedure or a flight pattern we'd like them to consider. They want to make sure that all the communities are on board. So in other words, if we change a flight path so it doesn't overfly Lewisville, make sure you're not flying over somebody else. And if you are, make sure you have their consensus. So a lot of what we've identified will become recommendations to the city and the town, and then they will tell us, or somebody else, how they want to perceive, or sorry, pursue that. What would the priorities be? And do you want to take this to the FAA for moving forward? Finally, there's the implementation and monitoring, which will be the final step. That would probably, again, based on the conversation I heard today, some of that would be following further engagement with the airport, or sorry, with the FAA, possibly through a roundtable. But to not be discouraged, there's a lot of things in our recommendations that can be done in the short term, just working with the airport, who's already expressed willingness to work on these issues. So the things that are in their control to immediately implement, they'll be looking at and exploring, and then some of those things will have to be escalated up to the FAA for approval and more collaboration with them. So as I mentioned stakeholders, I kind of wanted to run through this fairly quickly. So you've got the Airport Authority, who I understand here is Jefferson County, and their role is basically, I believe that's through the Board of County Commissioners. They tell the airport what the, this is my interpretation, I didn't get this from the airport, but working with other airports. Typically, they are the highest body, and they tell the airport, you know, what they see the long-term vision for, and how they want the airport to be run, what direction. So they actually have the ultimate authority, okay? Then you have the airport management and the staff who take the direction from the, in this case, the county commissioners, or whatever the airport authority is, and they enact what they're directed to do. Then here, you have an airport advisory board who advises, as I understand it, here, they advise the commission on airport-related issues. They also do some community engagement and things like that. But I want to make it clear, sort of the hierarchy. So you have the county, the Board of County Commissioners, telling the airport or directing the airport on how to manage and how to move forward with the airport strategically. And then switching to the FAA, we hear a lot of complaints about the FAA, and they're kind of painted with a broad stroke, and I've had my own frustrations with them, so I understand it. But it's important to note that the FAA's role is to promote aviation, right? So they're responsible for maintaining the national airspace system, which you'll hear a lot, promote it in terms of make sure it's robust and it can meet the demand for air travel in the United States. I'm not defending that, but I'm telling you that that's what their role is. Then when you dive down a little bit lower, you have Air Traffic Control, which is a part of FAA, and their job is really boiled down to safety and efficiency of the airspace. So the control tower here, their mandate is to make sure that aircraft are flowing in and out of Rocky Mountain Airport, and they're doing it in a safe manner. So when we introduce things like, we want a noise procedure that maybe impacts efficiency, that kind of goes against what their mandate is, and so that's why we have to work with them to try to minimize the impact to efficiency and absolutely minimize or ensure there's no impact to safety. You know, if we have a noise procedure that'll reduce noise for a community, but it's going to put airplanes in an unsafe condition, then obviously, they're not going to approve that. The pilots who fly around, their main role is just to fly legally and safely. I know sometimes people think that they're flying in a manner to intentionally cause annoyance, and in my 26 years of working in airports and 20 years in noise, I've never had a pilot or evidence that a pilot was trying to be malicious and fly over home in order to upset you. So I know some people think that happens. I'd be very surprised if you knew the rates that people are paying to rent an aircraft to fly over your house just to upset you, it's just not very likely. There's a number of airport tenants, looking at Rocky Mountain, those folks are like the flight schools, the fixed-space operators who sell fuel and things like that. In the context of our work, their role is to provide input on what they are and aren't willing and able to do in terms of noise abatement. So far, the airport tenants that I've talked to and that I've heard through the conversation with staff have been very, very supportive. We've been really happy. Jim and I have worked with a number of airports, and I can honestly say that this airport and the tenants have been more open and more eager, to be honest, to work with us than many that we've worked with. And then there's local and regional governments, which includes the town and the city. And the biggest thing there, as far as what FAA would say the role is, land use planning, so make sure that the airport, you know the airport's there, so make sure that your zoning and development is compatible with the airport and the flight paths. And then oftentimes, as we heard today, the FAA encourages local and regional governments to work with the airport, so there's collaboration across the board. Just to hit this one more time, FAA, if you look down at the mission, that's what they're told to do. That's what they're told to do by the President, by Congress, that's what they do. And so it's really difficult when I'm working with communities that, rightfully so, they get frustrated, but we all have to keep in mind that their mission is safety and efficiency. And most of the time, I'm asking them, as a noise guy and a community advocate, to be a little bit less efficient. And as we've seen at Rocky Mountain, they're willing to do that, but we just have to keep in context that their job is to maximize efficiency and safety. We're asking them to compromise that. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. So far, they've been willing and able. Okay, so focusing on the recommendations now. We broke the recommendations down into five focus areas. We've got flight operations, procedures, and practices, and that's really the bulk of what we've got to share today. Then there's community outreach, industry outreach, land use planning, zoning, and development, and regional collaboration. And again, all of the recommendations we came up with came out of the baseline study and what we found there. And I should have said during the baseline, that also include quite a bit of community engagement. So we had meetings with the trustees that we heard, public comment. We had one-on-one conversations with many residents. The airport shared with us quite a lot of complaint data that we were able to look at for five years, I think it was five years, that we called through to really understand the patterns and how things have changed in terms of the community's perception, and then we linked that to operational change that we saw. And I don't know, and then regional collaboration is that fifth bullet. But I just wanted to communicate that the origin of these ideas all came out of that baseline. For flight operations, we broke this down into these four categories. The most important reason is, the single-engine piston really represents the flight training activity that we heard a lot of complaints about. So the touch-and-go, the pattern work, where they're going in a circle, that's primarily single-engine piston aircraft, and we felt that it was really important to focus on that category of operator in particular. We also looked at multi-engine and turboprops. That's more what we found affecting Lewisville. The training activity right close into the airport is mostly hitting Superior and Rock Creek, whereas those leaving the airport or coming back to the airport is what we found to be impacting Lewisville. And it seems like most of that was related to multi-engine and turboprop, and then some jet activity as well. And then there was, we saw helicopter activity, and I did find complaints related to helicopters, but for whatever reason, that seems to be the lesser of the complaint source for the communities that we heard from. So switching into flight operations, I tried really hard to boil down a fairly robust portfolio of recommendations and strategies into what this should be about a 30-minute presentation, and then take out all the acronyms, and then take all the tech speak out. So that's why it may seem a little bit oversimplified, but that was why, so we can make sure we're all talking the same language. So the first area there, reducing noise at the source. The focus there is to encourage operators to manage the aircraft in ways that reduce the noise. So whether they're over your house or not, that's sort of, that's the latter bullets. But looking for lower RPM, that's how much engine power you have, rotations per minute. Pitch prop, I guess I am getting a little bit techie, but some aircraft, you can vary the pitch, or the way that the propeller, how would you say that?
Slides it through the air.
Slides it through the air. So we can manage the noise by being, by how the pilot adjusts the pitch on that aircraft. And then most aircraft come with aircraft manufacturer recommendations. At least, that's the case in the business aircraft world. So following those aircraft manufacturer recommendations, if they're available, is another recommendation that we're proposing. Also, the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association has a whole list of, which is included in our report, practices that primarily piston and propeller aircraft pilots can use in order to reduce the noise at the source. So then, you get down to the next bullet, and now it's, okay, can we get the airplanes away from residential development? Obviously, that's another key effort that we want to focus on. So one thing that we've looked at is community-friendly flight routes. We started looking at, you know, what might those look like, and I do have some examples on the next couple of slides, but we didn't go too far, primarily because we knew that this would have to go through a community-based process. I could come up, or actually, Jim, the ATC guy, could come up with a procedure, but it's going to fly over somebody. And so if I move it from Superior to Lewisville and I put it over somebody else, now we've just moved the problem. So for something like that, I think we'd have to come back to you guys, sit down, and whether it's a roundtable or whatever, however we can formulate a group that can represent all of the communities that would potentially be impacted, we would have to gain that input before actually designing actual procedures. Development of instrument flight rules, it's getting technical, I apologize, and the visual flight rule approaches, these are the landings and the takeoffs that you see, primarily not the flight training patterns, but maybe somebody coming in from Centennial Airport or Longmont or some other airport. There's visual flight rules, and there's IFR flight rules, and we can develop procedures that are a little bit more community-friendly than what's being used today. Specialized routes to and from the training areas. For anybody that was at the community workshop that we had, I think it was a month, six weeks ago, we talked a lot about the flight training areas, because a couple residents had emailed us flight tracks showing the majority of flights were going from RMMA, at least on the day that they gave us a map, north. So we looked into that, well, why is that? Well, there's two, I guess, flight training areas, north, I don't have the exact location, but quite a bit of traffic going up there. So Jim looked at that and found that there may be ways that we can give them routes that they can get up and back from that, to and from that training area, or those training areas, but fly in an area or over land that would be less sensitive for residents, so open space, green space, industrial, commercial areas like that. Use of reporting points for VFR traffic, that's similar, where you find maybe a roadway or something like that where aircraft can fly to, and then they could fly, say, and I don't know the roads off the top of my head, but you'll see an example of this on one of the next slides. But it's similar to preferential routes, where you're putting people, the reporting point would be everybody would come to this location, which would be hypothetically a compatible area, so not, you know, Rock Creek. Let's fly over here toward this green space or non-residential area, and then come into the airport. And then early turns and close-in patterns, that's a big one, and one we heard quite a bit, especially for Rock Creek, because when you're flying touch-and-gos, if you don't turn off of runway heading fairly quickly, you're going to hit Rock Creek. So we've got some work to do with the tower to see if, how feasible that would be and how that could be implemented. I believe, and Jim can comment on this, that that's something that locally could be enacted by the tower without a large FAA, you know, bureaucratic process. And we've seen examples of that, which I will show you a slide as well, so I think that could be a big and easy win for us. So routing aircraft away is an important option. Also, when you can't be routed away from community development, can you fly higher? So we've looked for some ways, increasing the pattern traffic, or the traffic pattern altitude, that's actually something that the airport's already working on. But when you're flying that touch-and-go pattern that I mentioned, get them a little bit higher up. So obviously, the higher you are, the further you are from the residents below, and the less noise you'll see. Also, increasing departures on, increasing departure ascent rates. So basically, when you take off, get as high as you can before you reach the residential areas. And then approaches or landing, keep that aircraft as high as you can. We've gotten reports from residents that airplanes kind of leveled off really low, far from the airport, and just sort of stayed, you know, at 1,000 feet or whatever it was. So we're encouraging, or we're recommending encouraging pilots to use the guidance that's available at the airport. It'll tell you where you should be, what would you call it? What's another word for the Pappy? There's like guidance that tells you when you're landing, your glide path, your airplane is too high or too low. So we would, you know, you can be too low and not run into anything, it's just not the three-degree ideal glide path. So we're, we would encourage them to stay up at the three degrees and intercept that as far out as you possibly can. Finally, reducing nighttime operations, that was a huge one, we heard a lot from folks that are just, really, the noise overnight, late night and early morning is just exacerbating. So we've worked with, we've talked to the airport, they're actually looking at, I don't know what they're calling them, usually airports call it voluntary restraint from flying or voluntary curfew. We've chatted a little bit with some of the residents about the limitations that the FAA imposes on mandatory restrictions, on nighttime operations, curfews, et cetera. But the airport is willing and looking at voluntary restrictions overnight. So just a couple of examples now to kind of give you some pictures that represent what we're talking about. You can see that, these are touch-and-gos, just that I pulled off of a radar 24, and you can see a standard pattern, could be as far out as, I think that's Rock Creek, right? That they're flying over. So that, the closer-in one is basically what we're shooting for. If you can fly that closer-in pattern, and the closer in, the better, but there's a lot of conditions, including air traffic control, that will influence whether they can do that. But that would be an example, because in my view, if you fly that close-in track, you're avoiding Rock Creek, which is really what we're hoping we can do, minimize those overflights, especially pattern traffic where you might have two or three airplanes going around and around, and we know that can be annoying. So the same principle would apply. I didn't, I only have one graphic here, but the same idea would be closer in would be better in terms of reducing noise. So this is an example of a departure, so we're not staying in the traffic pattern. This is just taking off from the airport and leaving the area. The line that goes, looks like due north, seems to me to avoid at least the close-end residential communities. So I would think that that would be preferred over that wider pattern that would go right over Rock Creek and over many neighborhoods. So again, these are, these are just notional. We would need input from the community and from the city and the town before making a formal recommendation on an actual design, but these are the things that we're trying to encourage and pursue. These are a couple notional procedures. Did you want to talk to these, or did you want me to?
So, one of the things that I wanted to tell you about was the ingress and egress to the practice area to the north. One of the things that we're encouraging is to use less populated, less, you know, lower-density residential areas to do that. There seems to be a path to the north and east out there. Today, they basically go up at, what is it, Highway 2, what is that, 287? Today, they basically go up at, what is it, Highway 2, what is that, 287 that goes north? Yeah, and, and that's what they've been set, told to do, is kind of go along that highway or just to the west, which puts them over Louisville and Lafayette. But this path, whether it is used going out or coming in, would basically go over more of an open area and avoid most of Superior, most of Louisville and Lafayette and Erie and stay west of the Erie Airport and go to the north practice areas. And then the other one was coming back in to use the open airspace out to the west of Superior to come back to the south. The one thing that I did want to touch on with these was why are the airplanes all going north? Because a lot of you guys have said, you know, why can't they go south? Okay, so aircraft that go to and from the practice area, the primary reason they do that is because they are conducting maneuvers that can be considered acrobatic, okay? They are not allowed to do acrobatic maneuvers within five miles of the airport because they're in Class D airspace. That's regulatory airspace that they cannot do those acrobatic maneuvers in. The other thing is, there's a big thing to the east of us here called Denver International, right? They have even more restrictive airspace, it's called Class B or Class Bravo airspace. You have to be talking to the air traffic controllers at Denver. You have to be squawking a specific code on your transponder to be able to operate in that airspace. They're not allowed to do any kind of acrobatic activity there. And if you look at the, the maps, and we don't have a good depiction here, but if you look at the aeronautical maps, the contour of the Class Bravo airspace and the mountains converge as you go south. And then you get over much more densely populated areas. That's the other thing, is you're not allowed to do acrobatic maneuvers over densely populated areas. So for them to do the maneuvers that they are required to do for training, which includes stalls, steep turns, those types of things, they have to be over open area, very, less densely populated airspace or area, I mean residential area. They got to be out over open area. And the only place that that's really available, that's close enough that they don't burn all their time getting to and from the practice area, is those practice areas to the north. So that's why the vast majority of them go north. So.
Thank you.
Most, most of that, yeah, most of that, a lot of that is still within that five miles of the airport, that class of airspace. There's a little bit of space out there, but not enough for a bona fide practice area. I mean, it, it's just not, so.
All right. So moving on, we, I talked a little bit about maximizing altitude. So this is an example and it does get a little bit technical. But what we're trying to depict here, they, in, in aeronautical terms, they call it best angle of climb. Basically, and what I tried to depict is that there's two, there's two climb rates that are depicted. And you can see the little house underneath the first plane, that's what we're after. Climb as quickly as you can when you depart the airport. So by the time you get to the residential area, whether it's, you know, on either side of the airport, you're as high as possible. Again, the higher you are, the less noise is heard on the ground. And then on approach, kind of the opposite idea, come in as high as you can. And as high as you can is defined by safety, obviously, and FAA regulations and air traffic control instructions. But I think there's, based on what we looked at, I think there are opportunities here to see higher altitudes on departures and higher altitudes on, on approaches as well. And then there's some other ways that we are looking, again, I didn't get into the real detailed level for this, but there's a number of other strategies that we're recommending for helping encourage operations. So by the time you depart the runway and you get out over the community or as, you know, to the airport fence, if you will, you're as high as possible. There's many additional strategies that we can pursue that would help with that. And then there's voluntary restraint from flying. We talked about, I talked about that a minute ago. Basically, it's a voluntary restriction or voluntary curfew. And you're asking operators, you're asking pilots not to fly at night. One thing I'll say is, these numbers, I kind of pulled those out of airports that I've seen with similar programs. Those numbers are not reflective of something that necessarily that Rocky Mountain is looking at, nor is it something that we've recommended. I didn't come up with a time, that's just for illustrative purposes. So I don't want anybody to walk away from this and say, oh, there's a curfew from 11 to 7. The airport, this is the first time they're seeing this slide, so this is for example purposes only. But there's two recommendations we have here. One is, you can put in an all operations restriction, voluntary restriction. And you can also, I've seen, training and touch-and-go restrictions. So some airports have both. So you're asking, you know, sometimes it's difficult to get like a commuter operator or business operator to not come in and bring, you know, their passengers in at night. So what this, what a training and touch-and-go restriction could do is discourage that, again, the circular traffic that people have emailed us about and the airport and the town, to not have the touch-and-go activity so late at night or so early in the morning. We've talked about challenges to that because pilots do have to get nighttime training, which has to be done in the dark. So in the winter hours, when it gets dark, I don't know what time it gets dark here, say 5:00 PM, you're probably going to have people flying. But in the summer months, when it gets dark, or sorry, yeah, flip that. In the, in the summer months, when it gets dark really late, you might have operators that have to get their flights, their nighttime flights in, which means they may be doing it later at night. So again, these would be voluntary, but I've seen a lot of success. And some of you had recommended to us to look at Boulder, which we did. We also looked at Centennial and both have, I believe, voluntary restrictions similar to what we're proposing. So switching gears a little bit to community outreach and engagement. There's a couple of things here that we're trying to address. And one is the feeling that we heard from the community that they're not being heard, they're not being understood, and that nothing's being done. So our recommendations are kind of, you know, we've got recommendations for the town and the city, what they can do in terms of the website and some of their resources. And then we've got stuff for the, relative to the airport or the airport's website as well. And these are just strategies, again, to make sure that residents feel heard, residents are getting the information that they need and that there's a sense that something is being done. Things move slow, I mean, you, you all have, those that have been following us for the last year know it's a slow process. We are making progress. But we want to make sure that there's better communication and better outreach with the community. That last bullet there is, you know, establishing a noise working group. We did hear comments from the community that they would like to see that. We received comments from actually the town and the city related to interest. And then we had that meeting with FAA and they pretty much said that that's kind of the route that they expect. So I'm hopeful that there will be a roundtable for this area, whether that was hosted or owned or operated by the airport or one of the, you know, the town or the city or an intergovernmental agreement, that's yet to be determined. Centennial, which comes up a lot, is based on an intergovernmental agreement. They've got multiple jurisdictions, towns, cities and counties that are all members of an, you know, of a, or have a local, inter-local agreement, and then they fund it that way. So everybody has sort of a, you know, sometimes we hear complaints that, well, the airport owns that roundtable and so everything that comes out of them is what the airport wants. So Centennial is different, where they have it, it's jurisdictional. Airport participates and is part of the process. And it, so it seems to work there. So there's a lot of flavors that can come, but I, a roundtable is a strong recommendation from, from us. Industry engagement and collaboration. A lot of this is based on ensuring that operators, so aircraft operators, pilots, flight instructors, flight schools, understand the community issues and the noise impacts that they're causing and how they can participate in reducing that, those impacts. Again, part of our kickoff work was a flight training forum where, again, based on the fact that most of the complaints that we were hearing originally, particularly from Superior, were about flight training. And so we, we had this forum and I don't remember anybody at the, you know, we, we started brainstorming ideas on how we can reduce the noise impacts. And this was the flight schools and the airport and FAA. And nobody in the room said, there's nothing we can do, or there's nothing we will do, or they shouldn't have lived, moved in near an airport. We hear that a lot from the community, that's what you're hearing. So it's very positive. And, you know, the airport, or the, sorry, the flight schools want to do what they're in business to do, which is train pilots and fly. But they do seem willing to change operations in ways that will reduce the impacts for the community as long as they can continue to do what they do. So including flight, sorry, noise abatement in their flight training curriculum. We've seen that across the country where you're actually, you know, the flight students are learning about how to fly an airplane. How about teaching them how to fly an airplane quietly? Or so that they know when they do touch-and-goes, there is an impact and here's how you can reduce that impact. Flight instructor briefing, so obviously those are the teachers of the students, making sure that they're up to speed. Establishing noise program brochures, electronic and paper. I've done that with a number of airports where they have paper brochures, pamphlets, like at a flight desk when the pilots are heading out to the ramp to the airplane, they can grab one. Electronically allows you to put it on your website, people can download it. And the noise office can send these out to different operators and other airports, et cetera. We've got pilot forums here, expanding the airport website. You know, airport signage is always to just make sure that the pilots are aware that there's noise-sensitive communities and ways that they can take part in participating and reducing the impact. And, and again, most of the time, you know, they want to fly, they want to operate their aircraft safely. But more, more often than not, I do hear that, okay, yeah, we'll do that. If they know that there's a certain setting on the aircraft or a certain way that they can reduce that impact and be safe, typically, they will do that. Air traffic controller briefings is a way to bring the message to the control tower. So again, their focus is safety and efficiency. But I've participated myself in a lot of controller briefings, especially for newer controllers who don't even realize that noise is a thing, aircraft noise is a thing. They don't train on that, I guess, at the FAA, do they, Jim? At least not in ATC. Again, it's, I've been welcomed, we've had tower managers say, yeah, do it. It could be quarterly, it could be, I've, I've seen programs for new controllers or for recurrent training, so they get like training refresh each year. And keeping the controllers aware and keeping it on their radar so that when they're, when they're directing the aircraft, you know, like we had the slide with the earlier turn, the tight turn, they'll know that if they, if they kid that airplane turned earlier, it'll have a positive impact on the community and less complaints. So it's a good thing for everybody. And then this technical working group to review and collaborate on program elements. It's actually been developed, I guess, the airport has a noise task force already, made up of flight schools and FAA, I believe ATC is participating along with the airport. And they're kind of doing the technical nuts and bolts discussions on different elements that we've discussed with them and some that they've come up with on their own. So that's already in play now. And it's really important to have a technical group. So what we'll hear from the community is, this is an issue. And then we can give it to that task force and say, okay, you guys are the experts. You got the air traffic controller there, you got the pilots there, how can we do this and be safe and efficient? In terms of land use planning and zoning, this is focused on kind of effective land use planning and zoning. We can't, this isn't going to help the current issues or the issues of the past. But moving forward, some of our recommendations are ensuring that the planners, whether it's city or county or the town, are familiar with the existing noise exposure in the flight pattern. So when you're developing residential homes, maybe don't put it under a place that's got high exposure to aircraft noise and, and overflights. A lot of communities put in zoning and code requirements for non-compatible development. So that could mean the zoning authority says, okay, you can put residential development in this area, for example, in an airport critical zone, which is the area right at the ends of the runways. But if you do, we're going to require X, Y, and Z. It could be noise disclosure, it could be that the, the homeowner has, or the prospective homeowner, the buyer, is notified that there are aircraft overflights that will happen. And then they can make an informed decision. Does that bother you? If not, then that might be a great place. And if it does bother you, maybe that's not a great, great option. In some communities, they just require sound insulation, so to make sure that the interior noise levels are not too high. There's a lot of things you can do, but finding ways to, to encourage compatibility with new development. Reviewing and commenting planned airport development, I don't know if that's standard practice now. But typically, when airports do development, master planning, things like that, they put out public notice. So really making sure that the towns surrounding are looking at that and talking to the airport and understanding what's happening. And then commenting if you think it'll have a negative impact for your community. Let's see, and, and the, to skip down to the bottom bullet, updating the website. The airport influence area and the flight, sorry, the, the flight paths and patterns and also the critical zones, which should have been on that slide. I would recommend, or we recommend, publicizing those because a lot of people don't realize where they are. But the airport influence area, which I think is a state requirement, that that be depicted by the airport, that shows you sort of where the airport is saying flight activity is most common and where noise will be prevalent. And then the flight paths and the critical zones show you the highest density areas. So by publicizing those, and that could be done by the, the town, city, the airport, whomever. Again, residents can be informed when they're making these decisions. The hardest call I've had or have continued to get is, we moved into this house, nobody told us that the flight patterns were here or the airport was here. And of course, a lot of people, you're, you're further out from the airport, you might know the airport's there, you just don't realize the arrival and departure procedure is going to overfly your community. So putting as much information as you can, so people can make informed decisions, I think is really important. And the last area that we identified is regional collaboration and planning. And I don't know how much of this is being done, but we're encouraging some kind of planning and collaboration amongst jurisdictions. So the towns, the cities, the two counties and the airport are all working on, you know, like you could sit down with the airport and say, what is your long-term vision for the airport? Where do you see the airport in 10 or 20 years? What kind of airplanes do you see? Do you see any more runways? Where do you see those runways? Do you see them lengthened? And then you, you'll know what's coming and hopefully you can start planning and if you need to, mitigating for those future plans. But also, you can work with the airport on asking or encouraging compatible land uses. So if you have a project coming up that's going to be near the airport, working with them so that you can sort of make sure that you can coexist. Communication sort of seemed strained a little bit when we first started. So we, I think it would really serve you and, and the residents if everybody's talking and understanding these different issues. Establishing a regional planning forum, I, I think I heard today that there is one that exists, I forgot the name of it. But that you guys already have like a regional planning body that the towns and the counties are a part of. Maybe bringing the airport noise and operations and development conversation to that board. And then, of course, you've had recent collaboration with the congressional delegation who may be able to help with this area as well. So as far as current status, as I said, the airport's got a task force ongoing right now that's already tackling some of these issues. Based on the conversation we heard today, I think for long-term solutions that are in our report, I think there, there may be a need for a roundtable for FAA to really take those seriously. So that's something that you'll want to explore. We're currently supporting development of new arrival and departure procedures that are being looked at, I guess, by the task force. The airport is hosting quarterly meetings with flight schools and air traffic and the industry task force to address these issues. And the voluntary nighttime curfew is under consideration. These are just some bullet points. The airport and the FAA, like I've said, they're moving forward. We had planned on kind of presenting this stuff to you and doing the assessment and recommendations and then going to the airport. They've already started on a lot of this stuff. So that gives me a lot of, I feel really positive that, that things are moving forward. I know it's been a difficult past, but I think moving forward, I'm already seeing momentum, which is great. As far as next steps, prioritization of measures. So we really need input. We kind of came up with a big list of recommendations and things that we think will help solve these problems. But we need, you know, it's up to the town and the city to decide which should be the priority and how to best move forward. And then development of an implementation plan. And I had mentioned that to somebody who thought that meant, kind of like the FAA's comment today, which was the 18 to 24-month thing. An implementation plan can be developed in a couple of hours. You tell us, you know, we, these are the five things that we think are most important. And then Jim and I figure out, okay, what do we need to do, who do we need to work with? You know, if it was development of a roundtable, even that could be done in a few months. So don't get frightened by the implementation plan. So don't get frightened by the implementation plan, it doesn't mean we're going to have to take another year to start getting things done. Okay, with that, I think we'll open it up to questions and comments. Are we going to switch?
Okay. Jason, Jim, thank you for the presentation. Let's have our council and board transition back to the table so we can face a different direction, and we'll start with some board member and council member questions of our consultants. So if you guys want to stay, maybe stay up somewhat close, yeah, yeah.
We were thinking we would alternate questions if people have a series of questions. Does somebody or the trustees have a question they want to start off with?
Sure. I'd like for the consultants to maybe go into a little bit more detail on what transpired today at the Rocky Mountain Airport with respect to this meeting by the FAA. We've referenced it a couple of times during the presentation, but I think the, you know, the public has heard kind of bits and pieces on it, and there were four of us there today, and, you know, we all kind of had different takeaways from it, but I think it would be good to, if you can kind of start at a high level of, of kind of what, what brought that meeting on and what some of the, what the significance of that was.
So this for the audience right now, yeah, so the FAA Regional Office, most of the folks today were from Seattle, and they came down and offered to have a conversation with the airport, and they asked for the local jurisdictions to participate on sort of their vision on how they would be willing to support the efforts that, that the airport has started or initiated with respect to noise. And the big takeaway I got was, they're very sensitive to any change, like I had mentioned, like, an early turn or change in procedure that would move noise, so they know that we're working for Superior and Louisville, and their concern was, well, if we come up with a recommendation that moves noise away from Superior and Louisville, are you moving it to some other community? So their approach now, which they've learned through a lot of pain through Metroplex, as some of you are probably aware, where they're changing airspace and getting sued, their takeaway now is anytime they make a change, they want a community consensus that all of the communities that would potentially be impacted have a voice and, and say, yeah, we're, we're comfortable with that change. So the vehicle that they recommend now is a roundtable, which we thought was great since we were recommending it anyway, but they have a process and sort of expectations now that most changes that will require FAA, higher-level FAA review goes through a roundtable process, and all of the communities, like I said, that could be impacted, sign on or sign off in terms of generating consensus for any changes. Some of the, kind of, aside from that, I think some of the conversation was a little bit painful, because as usual, the, the FAA talks in a certain language, and communities and, and everybody else in the world, well, FAA and pilots, who I love, and airport people, which I'm one, we talk in aviation speak, and the community and the rest of the world talk differently. So the FAA will say something like, there's no significant impacts here, right? And then I've been in rooms like this, and I've had half the room stand up and start screaming because we have significant impacts. Well, what the FAA means is, per the statute, the law, there's a certain noise level that, that is considered under federal regulations significant, and it's not, well, I'm getting woken up three times a night, it's, there's a number, right? It's a scientifically-based metric. And so when the FAA says there's no significant impact and a resident says there is, they're talking about two different things. There was, there was a number of comments today, I think, that, that kind of went that way, where they were speaking one language, everybody else in the room is speaking another, and there was a lot of miscommunication, sort of frustration. Jim and I were kind of there, and I wanted to pipe in and say, hey, can we translate? Because both sides, you know, the FAA, I think, was giving a really bad impression, to be honest, to most of the people in the room because they were talking different languages, so I found that a little bit frustrating and painful because I wanted to chime in. Was there, did you want to?
So one, one other thing. When they came here and, and the briefing that they were giving, the way they were speaking was like they would have spoken at Denver or Los Angeles or San Francisco, something like that. So they're not really used to coming to airports this size. I will say the fact that they did come here is significant, because that in and of itself acknowledges that there's an issue, a problem to be solved. And so the recommendations that, that we're putting forward that have more long-term implications, that's the things that these, these roundtables and, and technical working groups will, will address. But I just wanted to say, it's kind of a big deal that they showed up at an airport this size. So it's encouraging, and there's a lot of translation that needs to be done, and a lot of defining of terms that needs to be done as to, you know, what impact means and that, those types of things, but I just want to say, we were encouraged by the fact that they, they showed up.
Thank you for your report. One thing that I note, that, that work that you've done is a point in time, so it's based upon what we know right now. And I, I think that there's a lot of really good recommendations, and I think we're going to have to make some priority decisions around those, and to me, the priority decision needs to be made about the ones, some of those recommendations that have the greatest impact to our communities. I mean, that's the way I would, I would think about doing it, but I'm going to go beyond your presentation a little bit. So when I talk about a point in time, it's what we're experiencing today, but what have you learned about what the future thoughts of the airport of, and how that might impact
So looking at the historical operational data from the master plan, which everybody can read, it's, it's publicly available and on the airport's website. For me, and I'm kind of looking in the, looking in the future, which obviously we can't really do, but aviation grow, is growing across the US, and so kind of extrapolating, I would guess and expect that the trend at Rocky Mountain will continue to, to climb. Operations are going to continue to grow as long as the economy's flourishing and people are choosing to fly more. So one of the key concepts that we were sharing about collaboration is really talking, you know, having conversations with the airport to see how you can manage that growth in a sustainable way, and how you can protect or minimize impact for surrounding communities relative to that growth, but kind of assuming that growth is probably very likely.
Jim, Jason, appreciate you guys coming out tonight. We heard from our community there was a problem while we brought you in. We're, we're not experts in this area, you guys are, and you, you came back to us with, with this information to help us figure out how to solve this problem. And, and what we're hearing month after month, and now you've heard it month after month, is our residents need relief. Looking at these recommendations by focus area, I, I appreciate that each and every one of these areas is integral to a long-term plan, but the community outreach, industry outreach, land use planning, and regional collaboration aren't going to give our residents relief immediately. So, so within the focus area of flight operations, procedures, and practices of the solutions you've identified, knowing the constraints of what is possible, what can be implemented timely, and what is the airport willing to do, which of those proposed solutions would you recommend we move forward with first?
Oh, goodie. That's me. Okay, so the, the three that are, that are currently in progress are the nighttime operations, the early turnout, early crosswind operations, and then they also have the ingress egress that we're talking about. The other thing that, that we've talked about in the noise task force is the, the climb rates. There's other, like, low-hanging fruit things where we can encourage full-length of the runway departures. If the aircraft depart full-length, they're going to be higher by the time they cross the end of the runway, that's something that is easily implementable. Yeah, yeah, the nighttime voluntary curfew, which I, what I heard today was there is, we're closer to consensus on the evening hours, not as close to consensus on the morning hours. So, you know, like we said, we don't want to say times because it's not, like, done in stone at this point, but it's being worked on. So there's, there's, those are several things. Things that would be more longer term as, as far as flight procedures are concerned, that, the ingress egress thing that we talked about where we had the notional slides, that's something that's, that's being discussed right now, but will probably be one of the things that's thrown to the roundtable because it has a potential to impact other communities and other areas. It's not just local to, to the communities here. But I think that'll be thrown to that. I think if the, the corporate jet traffic increases, heaven forbid, commercial traffic comes in, we have some recommendations for that as far as flight procedures that, that we can design to minimize the impact on the communities. So there's, there's a lot of things that the noise task force is, is already addressing, and there's things that we have recommendations for flight operations that can be addressed medium and long-term. So hopefully, that answers your question.
So I'll ask a follow-on to that. Certainly, the flight operations recommendations, those were the part of the presentation that I was the most interested in. I think the change management's certainly important, but to me, that's, that's not as much of a priority as actually getting the flight operations to change. And so I know at the end of your presentation, you asked for us to prioritize measures. That particular category is my top priority, much more than, much more than focus groups, although I know that will be valuable. So my follow-on question to Ken's, I mean, things like the voluntary nighttime flying hours, I, I completely understand that it has to be voluntary, so how do we actually get them to obey by that? That, I mean, that's really what I was hoping we would come in here today with. I know that's what I've asked for at each of the last meetings, is not just a list of strategies, which a lot of our citizens have mentioned these strategies already, but more, how do we get the airport and its clients to actually adopt them?
So, that's okay. So that, that is the purpose of the noise task force, to, to collaborate on those types of things. The bottom line, I think, is education. It is, it is making sure that the flight schools understand the impact of operations past 10, 11 o'clock at night and before 6, 7 o'clock in the morning.
So do you think that the pilots today with the outcry from citizens don't understand that a 5:00 a.m. flight is disruptive to the community?
What?
6:00 a.m. one.
What?
I get 5:00 a.m. ones.
Well, I, I really don't know. I, I really don't know. I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, because we haven't, we haven't really gotten into the implementation piece yet. And if we go to the flight schools and we, we're able to talk to them, we, we can find out the answer to that question. But I think ensuring that it is part of their curriculum, ensuring that the, the flight instructors are emphasizing, reemphasizing these points, all of the voluntary measures that, that they do, and to encourage compliance is the best that's, that's going to happen out of this. It's just a, it's just a matter of, of education, so.
So I'll.
We need to flip back and forth.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the community members for coming out tonight. You've been to a lot of meetings and provided a lot of feedback, so thank you very much for coming out again. And also, thank you to Director Anslo and the other members of the airport community for coming out tonight. That's, that's much appreciated and for taking steps to start to address some of the noise concerns, we appreciate that. You talked about this early turn a couple of times. I'd just like a clarification, if you consider that sort of in the low-hanging fruit category or the two-year FAA review category?
No, yeah, it's low-hanging.
Okay, great, thank you. And my second, my second question is, is along the same lines of Councilmember Maloney's, is sort of looking ahead to the airport expansion plans to the south. I'd just like to understand a little bit more about the review process. So we're hearing about this two-year review, or, you know, one-year community engagement review to change flight patterns, but today, it sounded like there may be no review for establishing new flights and new operations if there's no federal grant money, so I'm just having a hard time understanding that. I, I just don't understand how there can be no review for that, but there's a two-year review to change it once it's been established, so I don't, I don't understand that.
So environmental reviews are required for certain projects, a flight procedure change, depending on, I mean, this is really complex and hard to describe in sort of a really short answer, but flight procedures that are going to, if you're, if you're flying, so there's flight procedures, like you take off, you fly the pattern, right? That's an established flight pattern that, whereas if you're flying in from, I'm trying to describe like a Sid and a Star, like, if, if you're changing ground, if you're changing the ground track significantly, and FAA defines significantly, and it's below, I believe, 3,000 feet, then a NEPA, right, National Environmental Protection Act, review is required, and he, they, FAA talked today about the categorical exclusion, where they can say, well, that, there's no impact, we don't need to do any further assessment, or an environmental assessment, or an environmental impact statement. And depending on, you know, there's a lot of caveats. If there's a federal action, right, so that's what would, a grant being issued for an airport expansion, let's say a runway, there's a grant issued for that, that's a federal action which would require environmental, and that would also require public notice. But if you're talking about, like, is the airport, so I don't know what the development is to the south, but what I would say for something like that is, going back to that fifth bullet of collaboration, I mean, I would just talk to Paul and his staff and say, hey, what, you know, what are the development plans? You could look at the master plan, I don't know when the last, when the next master plan will come out. Okay, so that will have a process, public process as well. But yeah, I mean, if you gave me certain examples of, you know, if the FAA was doing, it, it's all, like I said, triggered by federal action, so if the air, if the airport is getting grant money or FAA has to approve a particular project, then that's a federal action, and then it goes through some kind of a NEPA.
But I think, I think one of the things that they were talking about, the CADAEX today, that was, that was grant money to the airport to do things on the ground, not in the air.
Okay, so I'm trying to think of a infrastructure project that would be categorical, yes, so if you're getting grant money to repave your runway, the runway's not getting any longer, any, sorry?
Yeah, just to, just to clarify, that's, I, there's some expansion plan to the south, and I, I, my understanding is there's some expansion plan to commercial traffic and some other things like that, so not, I'm not talking about a runway overlay or anything like that.
So it would, whether public outreach was mandatory at the, by the federal government would, would just depend on the nature of the project. So if they're expanding to the south, like, or you talk about a new runway or a, a hangar, that I'd have to look up whether there's, I'm not, to be honest, I'm not clear if putting in a new hangar would require public notice and, like, a NEPA review. They were talking about public notice in the context of NEPA, and I'm not sure, I could look, we could find out for you, yeah.
A few comments, questions. First, I would hope, just on that, I would hope that some type of environmental review would be required, considering south of the airport is downwind of Rocky Flats, and so I would certainly hope that would be required. Second was regard to the comment around kind of voluntary programs. I was discouraged today hearing about the voluntary programs. The FAA spokesman used the word, "I caution you about voluntary programs." If you have penalties, which I think was my expectation, that those voluntary programs would no longer be voluntary, and so we were cautioned by the FAA. Why, I'm also appreciative of the FAA attending today, for those that were there. I was really discouraged by the meeting, very discouraged by the meeting. We invited the FAA here tonight, they had, I think, five or six representatives that came down from Seattle, said, hey, what, what a great coincidence, we have the members of the community here, please join us. They declined, they were otherwise engaged. We invited the FAA to come speak to the town of Superior at a town board meeting anytime over the next nine or 12 months. They declined. They declined mostly. I got maybe a maybe there, but it sounded like a hard no, that that was not something they could do to engage with communities. So, that was also discouraging. This concept of a roundtable, which has been mildly effective in places like Centennial, and there have been some outcomes, cost money, right? We don't have, the town of Superior doesn't have resources to run a roundtable. Louisville doesn't have resources to run a roundtable. We're going to have to spend more money on consultants. So, there was a dialogue around where does this money come from? Can the FAA contribute? Can the airport contribute? The airport has previously signaled that it would be a conflict for them to contribute, although we'll certainly ask for them to contribute. The FAA said they were prohibited from, legislatively prohibited from participating. I found some regulations that I'm not sure that would, in fact, prohibit them. So, what, what could you do? Continue to call the airport noise complaint line. I frankly found the FAA and members of the airport a bit dismissive. There was a complaint that the same two to three people call five to 10 times per day? Good on you. If you were disturbed by five to 10 times per day, call five to 10 times per day. I, I found that dismissive. The task force that has already been established there, this noise abatement task force, there was a member of that task force who was also dismissive, who said perhaps those people should not have moved into that community. So, I, that is a dismissive comment that I, I, I just do not accept that comment. Finally, I, I would encourage you to talk to your congressional officials. I think, you know, letting us know as your local elected officials is important, and we could do things like contribute for the roundtable, but ultimately, we were fortunate to have a representative from Joe Nogus's office today. I didn't see a representative of Pearl Motors' office, but perhaps they were there. I would encourage you to absolutely contact your local elected officials. Tammy Storey was also present, but at the state level, I'm not sure how much we could do, but I was very appreciative of Tammy, who also expressed her disappointment around, this is my phrase, not hers, kind of the lack of neighborly engagement that we feel, which is what we're looking for. So, I appreciate the, kind of the summary of the FAA meeting today, but I, I was, I was discouraged. While I do appreciate them coming down here, we have only just started, and if they think coming down here and hosting a two-hour session is going to be sufficient, it's not going to be nearly sufficient. In order for us to make a difference, we are going to have to participate at a minimum in the roundtable, and your congressional local official, your congressional officials will have to become engaged. So, let them know. And every complaint, and then I'll close, every complaint needs to be logged by the airport complaint line. There's a little bit of miscommunication that if you complain about a flight that is too low instead of the noise, then perhaps that should go to the FAA complaint, and so there was a fear that maybe they weren't logging. We confirmed in front of the FAA, every complaint should be logged initially by the airport, and the FAA receives those reports. We will also have access to that report, but it's really important for them and for us and the FAA to have access to the data. So, continue to call the, the complaint line, or if you have a complaint. If you notice, in all fairness, if you notice that the box for the touch and goes has changed, or the, the, call the complaint line, which is just called a complaint line, but let them know that you have noticed a, an actual change, so.
Thank you for going to the meeting and telling us a little bit about it. I actually wanted to follow up because there was a meeting in Louisville a couple of weeks ago, and members of, well, at least a couple of people from Joe Nogus's staff were there. They had some, what I consider to be fairly promising suggestions and seemed very open to taking, taking next steps and not just sort of sitting back and, and just listening. I wonder if there was any interchange between anyone from the office, I mean, it'd be nice to know who, who from the office was there, if you know, and was there any, you know, suggestion of the kinds of steps that they'd like to take with the FAA?
My name is Kim Redd. I'm with Joe Nogus's office. I handle transportation for the Congressman, and he is actively engaged in this topic. And as you send questions and concerns and information to us, then I am logging that, I am relaying that to the Congressman, and he wants to try to figure out what the best thing he can do at the federal level is. He would like to encourage working on a local level as well with the community, but he understands that this is a large problem. He is a member of the Quiet Skies Caucus in Washington DC, which is a focus nationwide on this issue. And so, not just with regional airports, but also with airports like Denver International as well. So, I have, I went to the meeting this afternoon, this evening. You can go to our website. My name is Kim Redd, and so you can send me more comments. I get things on a daily basis right now, but I am trying to pull together that information for him so he understands what the concerns are. And we appreciate your advocacy on this issue.
So, Jim and Jason, thank you again for your, your hard work on this presentation. Thank you to the community. Thank you to Director Anslow for coming out tonight. Thanks to Joe Nogus's office for coming as well and representing. So, Jim and Jason, I have two main subject areas I want to cover, the first being, you know, the safety of the, the arrivals and the departures of the planes, and, you know, the appropriate altitude over the, over the homes. And then, secondly, kind of the, the data that you've pulled and incorporated into your report specifically as to flight schools, and, you know, whether there's an opportunity for some low-hanging fruit there. So, on, on the first topic, you know, one of the things that I asked of you both when you presented to the town of Superior is, and this is before we hired you, so we could have some actionable steps at the conclusion of this report process so that our residents could be equipped with some tools in their tool belt when a problem would arise, right? And from the data that's provided in the packet, 85% of the respondents from Superior said that noise was clearly, clearly a problem. And the presentation notes that 1,000 feet is the safe altitude for, for planes to travel over a populated area, I believe 500 feet for a less populated area. My, my question for you is, you know, what is too low for flying over, you know, Rock Creek and specific, in, in Superior? And then specifically, what are the consequences for, for pilots and flight schools who are repeat offenders, who fly too low over residential areas? And then, most importantly, what should the residents do? Who should they call? Should they be calling Congressman Nogus's office? Should they be calling the FAA? Should they be calling the airport noise hotline? So, what is too low, and who should we be calling?
So, let me start with the last first. The, the airport said, and they said in the meeting today, that yes, go ahead and call the noise complaint line at the airport first, and either they will relay to the FAA, or you can call Flight Standards District Office to, to report low-flying aircraft. Now, what constitutes a low-flying aircraft? That's a great question. The problem, I think, lies in the first line of the, of the regulation, which says, except as required for takeoff and landing. Okay? That's the very first line of that paragraph. Except as required for takeoff and landing, 500 feet over non-congested areas, 1,000 feet over congested areas. Okay? So, the expectation that aircraft will always fly at 1,000 feet over the town of Louisville, or the town of Superior, the city of Louisville, good gosh, I'm going to get that right one of these days, is, is good for aircraft that are transitioning the airspace, but not aircraft that are taking off and landing. So, if they're taking off northwest over Superior, the, the IFR, the instrument flight rules, minimum climb gradient is 200 feet per nautical mile. So, if they're climbing out, if they can be shown to be climbing out at that rate, they're operating within the law. On arrival, and, and Jason mentioned the PAPI. PAPI is Precision Approach Path Indicator. It's a visual system on the airport that has colored lights that tells the pilot if they're on glide path to the airport. If they're on glide path, which is typically a three-degree angle approach, and they, they start out at 1,000 feet, flying in over Superior, and then they intercept that glide path, and they come down that glide path, and they get, if they're on glide path and they get less than 1,000 feet, less than 500 feet, and they're on that glide path, they're legal. So, that's the piece that we're addressing. Now, a valid point is, if by some chance, somebody is out there in the practice areas and they're coming back, and they're flying at 500 feet all the way in, and then intercept the glide path, well, that's not how it's intended to work. They're intended to fly over congested areas at 1,000 feet and then only descend as required to land. So, they should not be out there cruising over the city at 500 feet. That, that is, if, if it's out flying around at 500 feet or 200 feet or something like that, that is not intended, that's not, that is in violation of the regulation. Okay? But I, the ones that I'm saying, on the arrival and departure, if they're below and they're in the process of taking off or in the process of landing, and they're on that glide path and they're doing at least the minimum climb, that's legal. If they're just out there flying around at 500 feet over congested area, that's, that's in violation of the FAA.
Let me just ask the follow-up question, because, you know, I, I don't think what we're seeing from any of these low-flying planes is anybody cruising in from Longmont at 500 feet. What you're seeing is touch and go traffic, so they're never, they're never not taking off or landing, right?
Correct.
They're always in that climbing or descending space, and so sometimes those, those planes are very low.
Right. So, so when they, when they depart and they're heading northwest, and they're making that crosswind turn, they are, yeah, they, they can be at a very low altitude, climbing to pattern altitude. So, then, when they get on the downwind, they do get up to 1,000 feet, they level off on the downwind, but then when they get towards the approach end of the airport, they start down again. So, in those touch and go patterns, especially on hot days, you know, when it takes longer to climb and longer to get to 400 or 500 feet, which is the altitude that they normally turn crosswind at, yeah, they may drag out over the town before they make that, that turn, so.
Okay, so my, my second question that I had, you know, with regard to the data that you pulled, and, you know, most of the increased traffic that we're seeing at the airport is attributable to the flight schools, right? And so, my understanding is there, there were two, now there's four flight schools. Is this, is this a consequence of growth in general at the airport, or are, is any specific flight school kind of a problem child that is, you know, attributable for most of the really sensitive touch and go traffic, right? And, you know, it would seem to me that this summer was something unusual happened, right? And we had never seen this volume of flights and this volume of complaints. And with the arrival of new flight schools at the airport, I don't know if it's a coincidence, but, you know, it seems like that might be an opportunity for some low-hanging fruit to at least reach out to, you know, the newer flight schools and see, is there something that they are doing specifically, or have the other flight schools maybe changed their practices over the past six months and, you know, have changed, you know, the way they're routing these, these, you know, touch and goes, that is, you know, the real opportunity here, right? That if we can address this problem that is actually causing all of the volume, the noise, the traffic concerns, the, the altitude concerns, that that is where we should really be focusing our attention rather than, you know, implementing, you know, voluntary practices and, you know, roundtable groups that, you know, may not necessarily be followed.
So, I, I think we've talked about the increase in operations, and that was in our baseline report, that we've seen significant growth. And as you get more training operations in that pattern, the pattern gets wider and longer, right, because you got to keep everybody separated. So, that's when we're seeing, when I've monitored flight ops on, like, Radar 24, when there's four or five in the pattern, that's when it starts getting longer and into, into Rock Creek, for example. So, one of the things we'd love to see is the tower limit the number, or voluntarily the, the schools not saturate the pattern. We have to figure out, well, if there, how many can be in the pattern, you still keep kind of a tight, a tight, you know, turn radius upon departure. But I, I'm, my guess is, and I, I don't know, it's just a guess, it's the increase in volume in ops and training operations and aircraft in the pattern, that you're seeing more of them, and they're a wider pattern because, you know, ATC has to keep them adequately separated. But I know the industry engagement thing seems sort of touchy-feely and not operational, but the whole idea with the industry engagement is getting into the flight schools and saying, hey, this, you guys are causing us a lot of, causing the community a lot of impact, there's opportunities to change that. And similarly, the control tower, getting into the control tower, talking about how they can do a better job in terms of reducing community impact. So, I, I think, you know, any procedural or practices that you implement are worthless unless the pilots know that they exist. So, the industry engagement is about letting them know that these are in place and why and why it's important to comply.
But, but the question is, you know, so which pilots, right? In, in looking at the data, were you able to determine, I don't know if you dialed down to the level of, you know, these flights are actually originating from, you know, flight school A, and that these flights are originating from flight school B, were you able to dial down into the data to actually determine if there was one particular flight school that was over-representative of the problem?
Yeah, we, that would be difficult, if not impossible. You'd have to track by tail number and then trace it. We didn't do that. But if we hit all three, I think there's three flight schools right now, and if we outreach, or if the airport outreach us to all three, then you're, you're sort of doing the same thing. We're not singling out, saying, look, you guys are the bad guys. We're just saying, all three flight schools, can you please do X, Y, and Z to reduce the impact for the community?
Let me just say one thing, too. I know there, every time we use the V-word, you know, there's disgruntlement. What we are tasked to do, and what we told you we would do from the beginning, was we would tell you what we can do within the law, and, and that's what we've done, told you, and we're not going to set your expectations that something can be accomplished that can't within the law. Unfortunately, all these programs today are voluntary. They, that's just a fact. The, the, yeah, I mean, these were laws that were changed a while ago, and we talk about the curfew laws and stuff like that. Anybody that actually has an enforceable curfew, that was, that's grandfathered in, can't do that today. So, even the, you know, the frustration from us giving you these recommendations that are voluntary is only because that's what we're constrained to do by, you know, so I don't want to recommend something, we don't want to recommend something to you that's, that's not doable. So, that's, that's a limitation that we have in, in the things that we give you all. So, you know, when we say education, that's really a big part of it, is to go and educate these flight schools and all operators that fly in and out of the airport of what they can do to help mitigate the impact to the surrounding communities and be better neighbors. So.
So, it seems to me that we're going to get the fastest response from things the airport's willing to do. Are there, are there things that the FAA, are there things, are, of all your recommendations, particularly the kind of flight operation, more technical recommendations, are there things the airport cannot do without, without the FAA, you know, intervening or, you know, or taking some other sort of action?
So, so, one of the things that we asked about was, there is some discrepancy as to what the pattern altitude is currently today. The, the control tower believes that it's 800 feet above the ground, which used to be the old standard, and the, the airport says, well, it's 1,000 feet, which is the current standard. Just virtually anywhere across the United States, pattern altitude is normally 1,000 feet above the ground. If you go and you look at the Class D airspace and the overlying airspace, which is the Class B airspace from Denver, that is like a brick wall vertically, that the aircraft cannot go above without talking to Denver. So, the Class D airspace, the five-mile circle around the airport here, the cap is 8,000 feet. feet. The other thing that they do is, they use 500-foot increments for different types of flights. So, 7,500 feet is a transition altitude. That's the altitude that the tower normally approves aircraft that are overflying, that are not taking off or landing. So, 7,000 feet then becomes the altitude that turboprops and jets normally fly the pattern. And then 6,500 feet, another 500 feet down, is where the single-engine airplanes do. We've asked if the single engines can go up to 6,700 feet as the standard, which would make it a thousand feet above the ground. The, the answer that we got was, we have to talk to Denver Metroplex Project to get, you know, Mother May I permission to be able to, to do anything. So, that is another reason that the roundtable would be a good thing, because there's that, all that connectivity. If the roundtable makes a suggestion, and it's a consensus from the roundtable to the FAA, and the FAA says, okay, there's no safety issue here, but we need to coordinate with X, Y, Z entities, they have the connectivity to do that. So, that's an example. Another example would be developing a SID, or Standard Instrument Departure, out of the airport, which is a flight procedure that has to be, we can do the notional designs, but that has to go through their flight procedures teams, and through Oklahoma City, and do all the safety checks and all that stuff, that's a longer-term thing. They haven't said no, but there is a, a big, that's one of those 18 to 24-month approval processes to get anything like that done. Does that answer your question?
Kent?
No.
Yes. Does somebody down there have a question? I have some others, but why don't you go ahead?
Sure. So, I have another follow-up to the comments that Mayor Protem Lasis talked about. First, I hope it's really clear, I absolutely support collaboration and change management. I mean, I think that's an essential part of any solution, but I want to ask about a specific example that you gave. We talked about the increase in flight operations means having to fly wider patterns to keep everyone in line. I follow that. So, the only way we can get the smaller patterns is by having fewer planes. Fewer planes is going to mean less revenue for the flight schools, less revenue for the airport, and, and I'm sure that Director Anzler would agree that none of them want that, I get it, they want to increase their revenue. So, do you really think that education is going to be effective? I mean, I understand that, particularly the FAA has noted this has to be voluntary, but what, what is the incentive we're proposing? If we're just proposing continual education, but no incentive, I don't see how that's going to be effective when they have real dollars on the table.
Yeah, so, my comment about the fewer operations, that's in the pattern at a particular time. So, let's say there, so the recommendation, or the actual implementation of that recommendation would be, when able, maintain a tight or a close-in touch-and-go pattern at RMMA. So, if you go out there at, say, I don't know what time the busy times are for Rocky Mountain, but if, you know, when the tower is able, so there's three airplanes, or two airplanes, or one airplane, doing the touch-and-gos, I don't, so that's when they would do it, when conditions allow. I'm not suggesting, nor would I, even though it'd be really popular in this room, that, that we would recommend to you that you try to get the airport to have less operations or tenants, because they're not going to do it, like you said. So, this would be one of those things under the conditions that allow for it, we would ask the FAA to encourage a tighter pattern, and then work with the flight schools, again, when able. So, when you can do it safely, do that. So, it's not less total operations, it's just in the traffic pattern at any one time.
I mean, my assumption is that they're putting that number of planes in the traffic pattern, because those are the planes that want to pay to be in the traffic pattern at that time.
Well, they don't, they're not, you don't pay for that. You, you fly, and if you want to fly the traffic pattern, you do it, if you want to fly somewhere else, you, and I'm guessing they don't get more revenue regardless of, for touch-and-gos, you don't, whether the airplane flies away, or flies in the pattern in the airport, I don't believe it's more revenue for keeping them locally.
Okay.
Sorry, I want to ask that follow-up question. So, I, my understanding is, there are no, so, a, a full stop, there would be revenue, because there is a charge presumably every time a, a, a plane takes off and lands. I've read about other airports that are, have some, quote, revenues, some charges for a touch-and-go. Are you familiar with any of those airports that would charge for a touch-and-go? And while these programs may be voluntary, the flight schools, if they were paying for touch-and-gos, which are free today, and I've asked, and I'll crowdsource this, if anybody has any evidence that a pilot trained with a touch-and-go is a better-trained pilot than a pilot trained without frequent touch-and-gos, please let me know. I've emailed everybody I know, university professors, there is, I have not been able to find any evidence to say, and I know it's customary, and I know that's how pilots have been trained, most pilots have been trained, but some pilots are trained by their instructors without touch-and-gos. Is there a outcome, safety, whatever? But anyway, my question, my more direct question is, what if, is there an opportunity to physically, what if the airport adopted a charge for those touch-and-gos, which would have an economic discouragement for the continued touch-and-gos? And I suspect we'd see a decline in those. Are you familiar with airports that have done that?
I've never heard of an airport that charged per touch-and-go. I don't know if that's legal. If it is, it's something that you could ask the airport to impose. I'm not sure what I, it's not a recommendation we came up with, it's not one I'm familiar with or practiced.
It's the third time I've brought that up. It's the third time that I've brought, it's fresh, it's the third time that I've suggested requiring a full stop, or have a charge for a touch-and-go.
What I'm saying is I've not found, I've never heard of, or experienced, an airport that charges per touch-and-go, that's what I'm saying. I haven't found one, I don't know that it's legal. But, there's nothing stopping you from asking the airport to impose that.
Well, let's crowdsource that, and we'll, since you guys couldn't figure it out, we'll figure it out. Thank you.
There you go.
So, I, I'd like to go in a different direction for a moment. So, I read in the paper this morning that one of our neighbors to the east is suing DIA over noise. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to take a look at that article, or know about it. So, and obviously, all legal cases are different, but you all have a lot of experience in this Do, do municipalities, have they been successful in lawsuits over noise? Or is the FAA and the airport so incredibly powerful that that's a foolish route to go down?
Sure. Sure. Okay, so, everybody knows about Phoenix.
I know.
You don't know about Phoenix?
I don't know about Phoenix.
Okay, so, at Phoenix Airport, the FAA, through their Metroplex Project, altered the flight paths that, for the big jets, commercial jets coming out. They ended up turning the aircraft of what seemed to be a more noise-friendly corridor, however, it ended up putting aircraft closer to a historic district. The City of Phoenix sued the FAA. The court determined that the FAA did not properly follow their own processes, and therefore, they said, a status quo anti-resolution, go back to what you were doing before, rethink this and do it again. Since then, and I, I have to believe, one of the reasons that the FAA showed up here today, is that they have completely revamped how they go about community engagement, ensuring that they get opinions from everybody that could possibly be affected, and they have been diligent at that. Since that time, lawsuits against the FAA have been extremely difficult, if not impossible, to win, because they are, they are being very diligent at following their own processes. And, and let me say that again. The reason that the, the flight procedures in Phoenix were overturned was because they did not follow their own rules. If you can show that they are not following their own rules, you may be successful. One of the examples I can give you all, is a client that we're working with right now, all right, has an issue with aircraft that is overflying their community, but it's above 10,000 feet above the ground, all right? So, not anything near what you guys are experiencing, and, you know, we're going to those guys and saying, you think you have a problem, right? Okay, but, the issue being that they want to, they want to prove that the FAA has de facto created a new route, and they believe that they can prove that, and go to court and win that. My advice to them has been, even if you win, in this case, you lose, because if you prove that there's de facto a new route, and it's above 10,000 feet above the ground, that is what is, is called a CADEX, it's a categorical exclusion. The FAA, by law, can go back and say, you're right, it's a new route, we're going to categorically exclude that new route, and now we're free to use it at any time. So, they would win the, they would win the battle, but they would lose the war. So, one of the things that we advise our clients is, if, if you are going to go towards litigation, it is very hard to win a case against the FAA, and you're really got to have your ducks in a row, and you really got to be able to prove that they did not abide by the law, they did not abide by their own rules and regulations. And our experience here lately, with Southern California, we had, we had a client that had a lawsuit filed against the FAA, and we went in and worked with them to negotiate a settlement agreement, and we were able to get a settlement agreement with the FAA to voluntarily stay on the procedure that they had designed to a specific waypoint, which would ensure that the aircraft would not overfly the city. The FAA always will say, we'll do it as best we can, but there are circumstances where we have to turn the aircraft, we have to turn them for safety, for thunderstorms, for restricted airspace, there's a multitude of reasons that they have to turn. The advice that we had, had given our, our client out there was, that if you get close to 90% compliance, it's about the best you can ever hope for, because there's always going to be 10% of the time, they got to do something with an airplane, and that, that makes them deviate off the route. This, this was the only lawsuit in Southern California in the last several years that they got anything. All the other ones that were filed, the communities lost. So, even though it sucks to say that the voluntary methods is the only way that you can do things, if you can get something done, and get an agreement with the, the airport, the flight schools, and get buy-in from them, and get close to 90% compliance, realistically, that's as good as you can expect to get. I'm just telling you, that's, that's from our experience, from what we've seen, that's really pretty darn good. And so, that's, that's what our advice to you, reference litigation, would be.
Jim, you just walked into just the question I was going to ask.
Boom.
If we were to ask you to go ahead, we have, you know, probably 100 people sitting in this room, and another, you know, 10,000 or 11,000 out in our communities that want relief. If we were to tell you today, we would like you to go forth immediately and work with the airport, to educate the flight schools and their pilots, and to protract or contract those flight patterns, how soon before our residents could actually expect to see relief?
That's, that's a good question. I, I think, I don't, I don't know, it, it could be, depending on how much interaction, or how much time we would have to, to work that issue, you know, it could be as little as three to six months, I would say. It, it just takes, you know, going there, talking to them, helping them amend their curriculum, making sure that they get briefings on, on, you know, the impact to the communities, those kinds of things. It just, but it just, it takes boots on the ground to get that done. So, if, if that's something that we're allowed to do, and, and it's funded for, for us to do that, yeah, we, we could, we could do that.
And then a follow-up question to that, do you believe that there are actually people on staff at Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport that would be able to assist with that? Or are you and Jim the only people that, or other experts like yourselves would be able to do that? Or are there people at Rocky Mountain who could actually help make this happen?
Well, I, I think that part, as part of the noise task force, their staff has already committed a, a bunch of time to these issues. So, I, I think, well, I don't want to speak for the airport, but...
Attention guests, the time is now 8:45, and the recreation center will be closed in 15 minutes. Please plan your activities accordingly, so you can be out of the building by nine. Again, the rec center will be closed in 15 minutes.
Okay, I guess we better go. So, so, yeah, I, yeah. I, you know, I, I, like I said, I don't want to speak for the airport about how, you know, how much they would commit their staff to, to working on that. That's something that we would have to find out in the processes, as to, you know, how much time and, and money that they can put into the thing. I mean, they have, they have limited resources as well, so, not an excuse, it's just, I don't know.
Yeah, just as a follow-on, my understanding is, they've already, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot, they've already started doing some of that. So, if the question is, are they capable, they can do it just as well as I can, to be honest. We might have more experience with a wider number of airports and operators, but in a lot of cases, we would help develop curriculum and, and develop that, the outreach tools, and the airport would take that over and, and work with their constituents. But the airport already is doing, I think I mentioned, quarterly meetings, and they do tower briefing, so that's something that I think they can and would continue to do.
So, I, I just have one last question, it looks like Councilmember Lou has one, too, but, so the tower, in terms of doing things soon, the tower could control the touch-and-go pattern? In term, you know, so I guess it would be, it would be a matter of limiting the number of planes in the pattern, I, I guess, but I guess my general question is, does, how much power does the tower have to control some of these things?
Right. So, so, yes and no. So, yeah, that's a definite maybe. The tower, I mean, by virtue of the fact that they have the say-so of what happens within the Class D airspace, within five miles of the airport, could they do it? Yes. Will they do it? Don't know. We can encourage them to do it. The crosswind turns, that piece, it's not like they can say, turn crosswind now, because the pilot would say, well, I'm not high enough to turn crosswind, it's not safe. So, when the pilot gets to a safe altitude, they can turn crosswind. What we can encourage the tower to do, is to approve early turnouts, so that when the pilot gets to a safe altitude, they will turn and not delay their turn. So, a phraseology that might be, November 1, 2, 3, clear for takeoff, early turnout approved. And so, they, the pilot goes, okay, I know I can go on course as soon as I, I want to. So, they break ground, they get up to 400 feet, they can turn, and that might be before the end of the runway. But the tower could use some phraseology like that to encourage early turns, but they can't say, turn now, because they may not be at a safe altitude. So, that's nuanced, but...
So, so we can get out of here before nine o'clock. You, you two, thank you very much for everything you've done, and for everyone turning out. What I thought I heard you all say, because you work all over the United States, is, you sound pretty positive about establishing a working relationship with, with, it's always going to be Jeffco to me, but, RMMA. Is that a correct perception? That you're, you're, you're more hopeful for our situation than you are in some of the other situations you've been in nationwide?
Well, I, I will say this, I believe we have established a working relationship with the airport. Jason and I have picked up the phone many times, and called, asked questions, talked to them, we've emailed back and forth, we've participated in the, the noise task force meetings, they're open to us coming in there as a representative of the city and the town. So, I think we have established a dialogue with them, and a, and a, and a positive working relationship.
Jim, Jason, just another question from this end of the table. You guys have done this in a lot of airports.
Excuse me, I wasn't done yet. So, I guess I want to say to everyone... So I guess I want to say to everyone, we, we live in a very angry society now, and I think if everyone could try and step back and recognize that, that not everybody is evil, that, that everybody has different interests, I think that might go a long way to diffusing the situation, and hopefully, we, we can, we can come up with a working relationship in what sounds to me is a situation that we here in local government don't have a lot of control over.
All right. Actually, this does follow that a little bit, because you guys have worked in a lot of airports around the country, and one of the things I think has come out through here is whatever ultimately can get implemented, it's going to be voluntary because of the rules the FAA has prescribed. Now, the airports that you have worked in historically, and that have implemented some of these voluntary procedures, have they seen, as much as you know, a reduction in flight operations, or a curtailment in economic expansion? Have they seen a financial penalty negatively for adopting some of these voluntary procedures?
Not that I've seen, or not that I'm aware of.
Great. Thank you.
So there's a, part of our agenda that's supposed to be talking about next steps, and I think we're, we're getting close to the end here, so I guess I'm, you know, we could, we, we'll still, our open meetings rules don't allow us to, like, actually give direction to staff, but I think we could talk about kinds of things we'd like to, you know, see our staff come back with for, for next steps, based on this conversation, so... Mayor, Mayor Wilson?
Yes, I, I would agree. There's definitely a lot to digest here. We, we certainly want to go through this in detail, have our staffs go through this, and, and hear from the community. I mean, we'd like to hear your reactions to what you've read in the report. A lot of you may not have even seen the full report yet. The consultants referenced that they have addressed all of the questions, and I've read through all of them, it's quite detailed, and, you know, be interested in, in hearing some additional feedback from the community. So this is, this is definitely not the end. We're, we're definitely going to be doing more on this, and would appreciate everyone's patience as we work through it, and, and we'll, we'll continue, so. Any, any additional detail you'd like to add, Bob?
No, I mean, I think we'll want, I agree with everything you just said, and I think we'll want our staff certainly to, you know, take all this in and, and, you know, then have a conversation in an open meeting where we can give direction about kind of next steps. So I mean, it does seem to be there are some things that we could work with the airport on to make, you know, some noticeable changes sooner than later, and I, I think obviously, from, I, I want to, I, I will say that generally, what we can do that will have an, an impact sooner, seems to be, to me, to be where we'll want to focus our energies, although I do think a lot of this bigger-picture collaborative stuff is probably worth doing, so that we continue, I mean, this issue is going to change over time, so I think continuing to be engaged with our neighboring communities and the airport and other stakeholders in a more formal setting, maybe a worthwhile, long-term thing to do.
Yes, I would agree. Yeah, I think, you know, historically, this is the, the first time, I think, that our, our boards and councils have met in a work session together, so...
Attention guests, the time is now 8:55, and the recreation center will be closed in five minutes. Please begin to make your way to the exit with all your belongings, and have a good night. Again, the rec center will be closed, and doors will be locked in five minutes.
I thought they were going to have one of those hot yoga classes in here at nine, so that's why we needed to vacate, but apparently, they're just closing, so. Anyway, more to come, and thank you very much, everyone, for being here, and we'll close.